Public hearing and I'll remind everyone to shut your phones off.
We'll get started with the public hearing. I'd like to clarify that this public hearing is for the use of 2019 CDBG money which we receive in 2020. The donor we will be discussing in our work session is 2018 CDBG money. It's always, CDBG money is always a year behind. So I just want everyone to understand, this public hearing concerns only our application for the 2019 money. Okay, I'll need the introduction. The city of Titusville intends to apply to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under the Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Program. This meeting is being conducted to give citizens another opportunity to comment on the city's proposed CDBG application before the city submits its application to the DCED. The city conducted its first public hearing on Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, to discuss the CDBG program in general, the needs of the city of Titusville, performance under the previously funded CDBG program years, and to discuss the required three-year community development plan of the city of Titusville. There was no public comment at that meeting. Goals and objectives of the program include: Goals: Funding public infrastructure and community facility projects. Objectives: Benefit low to moderate income individuals and elimination of slums and blight. Total amount of 2019 CDBG funds available is $298,504. Proposed activities: The city is proposing to undertake the following activities for the year 2019. None of the activities will result in the displacement of families or individuals. All projects meet the national objective providing an area of benefit, 53.68% of the entire city population is low to moderate income. First project is South Perry Street Pedestrian Bicycle Walk Bridge for the amount of $171,341. The second project is demolition and clearance in the amount of $73,433. The third note here is the required administration and this is something that is dedicated for administration, it has to be, it's allocated for that reason. $53,730, which is 18%. For total of $298,504. Proposed amount is to be used to benefit low and moderate income people, 100% of it. Persons displaced as a result of the proposed activities, none. This time we'll open it for any public comment concerning the 2019 CDBG funds. Anybody? Mr. Anderson?
Mary Anderson, 120 West Colman. What is the demolition and clearance? Did we explain that? I thought that the county was going to do the demolition, no?
No, this is for any housing that may become up for tax.
Okay, this has nothing to do with the bridge.
No, nothing to do with the bridge, tell me that. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing on the 2019 CDBG fund.
Okay, we'll move on to public input pertaining to agenda items. All right, hearing none, CDBG update, the fire station renovation bids of 2019 CDBG application.
Okay, as I said earlier, this is, this is funds that are available now, they are all the 2018 funds that was allocated in 2018. The, the project was decided earlier to have the roof on the fire station raised, which would mean covering the entire roof with a peak roof, which is about 50 by 50 feet, it would cover all of the equipment in the fire station. We opened up bids the other day on, at 2:00 PM, the bid opening on 10/10. And this is the result of the bids, I, everyone in council has a packet of this. The, the first bidder was Hudson Construction. And there's an alternate and a regular bid. The alternate is sometimes a given and sometimes a take away. The, the purpose of the alternate, when they spec this out, they spec the special ceiling inside the firehouse, which is very expensive. I talked with the engineer prior to the bidding, we didn't really want the special ceiling, we wanted a steel ceiling, just because it would be a lot more economic. So they gave it as an alternate. The first bid from Hudson Construction, the base bid was $259,000, the alternate was an additional $6,000. That would be to eliminate the roof. Why that bid is more, I have no idea, why they actually put an add-on, but they did. Bringing that total bid to $265,000. The second bidder was CBF Contracting out of Sligo, Pennsylvania. Their base bid was $232,200. They had a deduct for the indoor roof at $14,486, bringing their total bid to $217,714. Third bidder was Associated Contractors out of Needville. Their base bid was $599,69, and their deduct for the roof was $27,500, bringing their bid total to $571,569. Fourth bidder was Gem Building Contractors and Developers in Newcastle. Their base bid was $234,743. Their deduct for the, for the difference in the roof was $5,000, bringing their total to $229,069. As council's aware of, the amount of money for the 2018 CDBG project was, for, the allowance was roughly $291,000, meaning after administrative fees, there's about $242,000 left over to do this project. We had originally talked about some of that money being demoed and some of that being the roof, because we didn't anticipate this costing anywhere near $229,000. The reason I say 242, the engineering is not included in here, the engineering alone is $32,000 to draw the plans. So we would, in order to complete this project, we need to allocate all the funds, all the available funds from 2018 to the roof replacement. This will also require a resolution to, to make this change, so that we can use the money for that, because we applied for, for something different.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Mannross, a little hard hearing. On the alternate here, was that the difference between whether it was steel trusses versus wood trusses, is that what?
No, no, this is not, nothing to do with the trusses. This is strictly to do with the, the ceiling inside the building. I had requested that they put just white steel on the ceiling.
Okay.
To cover, you know, to cover the whole truss, the bottom of the trusses. It would be actually the inside ceiling. Where, when they specked it out, they, they specked out a different type of material, which was really expensive. That's why you see three of these have a deduct for not using that. I nor the engineer can explain why this one company has an add-on, it should not be that way, but that's the way the bid came in.
So, all right. For my, you're talking about, in other words, it would just cover over the beams like what we, this, the ceiling like here.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Or we can leave the thing open as it is now, correct?
Well, it's not, well, it's not really open, there's insulation above it now, because it's a flat roof. We need to re-insulate that, so the truss roof, we're talking, you know, fiberglass insulation above that, something has to hold that up.
Right, is that included in the base bid?
Yes.
So, the worst that would be, would be that they string, like they do in a, maybe a roof of a pole barn, where they have the insulation on a vinyl back and they run it across that way, and so that just vinyl backing would show?
Probably could do that, you'd lose a lot of your reflectivity and, and cause lighting in there, and part of this package includes all new lighting, new LED lights. I'm not, there's many kinds of insulation that could be put in there, that just happens to be what the engineer recommended and speced out. Now that you mentioned the trusses, I want to talk a little bit about that.
Okay.
They're looking into the, the low bidder here to see if, what the deduction would be. They, they spec this also with fireproof trusses. Well, fireproof trusses are, are either steel or they're a treated type of wood. And they're very expensive. So, there's absolutely no need, they spec them to that because they anticipated that was the state code, that they had to have this. When I contacted the state building inspector, he said, "That's not so, they do not have to be special trusses." So, we can get a little bit of a deduct off of this, whatever that difference is, to go with a standard truss. And we're working on coming up with that figure, should have that for our council when we vote on, on the bidder next Tuesday.
Questions? Bill? Did you have someone to?
Can I continue?
Yes.
One of the reasons that this is at this level dollar amount is because you're using grant funds, in a sense. You have to pay prevailing wage, I'm very familiar with that part, but I just want to reestablish that in case anybody else is interested. So that pushes things up a fair amount. So, all these numbers here are considered, as well as with the engineering, is the prevailing wage.
Right, the engineering though, is not in these numbers, that's in addition to these numbers, that's a separate thing. The other thing that I might mention, it's raising the building, but we also have to raise the doors, the entry, you know, so the front of the building needs restructure too, and when you raise the, the building and you take out the headers, now, now you have to increase the door, new header, those type of things in the front of the building. So, that also increases the price.
Oh, brickwork or whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's actually metal up there now, and it would go back and it would look very similar to the way it does now, and it would have a peak.
Are you telling me that there's still a few numbers that need to be added up in here, we don't have the total yet?
It's, you have the total total if you add the 32,000 engineering on there.
Okay.
So that's 249,14.
If that's what the 218, yeah, that's, it should come out to about 242 something, handy there.
And at this point?
I, like I said, don't have those exact numbers until I see what this deduct is for the trusses. And other, we're looking at other things too, that may be a few dollars on. There's not a lot there to, to say on the trusses, and maybe a little paintwork inside that, you know, we could do ourselves, or the fire could do. No big giant dollars on this.
Okay, so this one contractor seems to be the, the lowest bidder at this time, with the base bid and with the deduction if we don't have the alternate, right?
Correct, CBF Contract, Sligo.
And when do they start?
But if you did put the alternate on the thing, he's not going to be the cheapest anymore, is he?
Yes, because it, it, the alternate is a deduct, so that brings him to 217.
Oh.
Next closest would be 229.
Sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing there, triple, time to be tweaked, okay? Okay.
That's, that's the other factor, if we would go with these fireproof trusses, they take a lot longer to make and will delay the, the company is ready to start, they're, they just need us to approve it so they can order the trusses, and as soon as they get the trusses, they will start the project. So, I would, we're hoping before snow flies, but we're, we're running out of time.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm getting at here, Esther, I'm sorry to take up this time, I just have a question, so, yeah, what was our timeframe on this thing?
They have 60 days to complete once they're awarded.
And we would like to award next week?
Yes.
So, next week we would have a, any more information, or the numbers stay the same?
If we can get any more deduct, you will have that number with the deduct for the trusses. Engineering numbers are a pretty solid number, I have a guess, so, I have some, I have some of those, but they, I was quoted under a contract, it's around 32,000.
Does the audience understand how this is going to look, then it's a peak roof, in other words, you're facing the two doors, instead of being flat, it'll come up this way now? So they, and all the snow loads have been looked into and?
That's what the engineers do.
Okay. Okay. I think I'm going to ask my question.
I have one. Now, you said that they have 60 days to complete, and if they don't?
Then they would, then it would be up to the city, it's building there that we can find them daily, and I think it's $500 a day, if they don't complete on time. It's in the contract, it's entirely up to us if, if we implement it. The reason I say that, if we got a blizzard and they couldn't work for a week, that's, you know, that would be something we would want to implement a penalty, because.
So we have a reasonable penalty clause?
Right.
Okay.
Are there any questions? Okay, moving on to public input.
Okay, we will adjourn the meeting into the 2020.
I was letting him get go, because I didn't know if he wanted to start, so did you want to say anything? I do, Mr. McCann, 02:01. I, I'm, I'm curious on how you move those funds from the bridge project to this project. Now I understand that it's all city oriented, because we do fall into low income, but is there a process, and last time I talked to Esther, she asked me to tell you the top yields, and how's that work?
There is a process, a modification process, probably about a quarter inch thick of paperwork that needs to be done. We had a public hearing already for that.
How, when, how was the timeframe of that?
The timeframe for?
When you figured out that you don't want to use those funds for the bridge, that you want to create for the front apartment or?
There isn't a 30 days or 60 days, there's recommended timeframes, and in this case, it, it's not truly an emergency that we needed, but the CDBG people, DCED people see that, you know, it is something that we do need to.
Right, I didn't know that house, like, but I, my, that's what, I didn't know how that goes, because that's south side, and I know that we're all going to come over there, and I didn't realize that it goes, that it'll go through the whole city.
Right.
So, I'm, bottom back to the whole bridge then, has anybody, I know it's, it's overdone with, because we don't have anybody to tear it down, we don't have anybody, we don't know who the heck to tear it down or anything. There is a place in Warren, I'm not sure if you know, they do temporary bridges, ADM Lowing?
State is going to tear it down, that's one reason that we had to reallocate the CDBG money. They will not have it torn down in time for us to utilize this money, and the money would expire before they got the other one out of the way.
So, for, I know, you're probably already applying for 20?
20. That would be the one we've talked about for the hearing, that would be 2019 money, which is available in 2020. That would be for the bridge again.
So when do you file again, can you do that again for the bridge so that?
That's, that's exactly what we're doing.
Okay, all right.
It's for the pedestrian bridge, is that?
That's fine, and I mean, but, but I don't know if you've ever looked into ADM Lowing, I don't know if you've ever heard of ADM Lowing?
Whatever.
It is a, it's a, it's a, a manufacturer of, of bridges, I, they, portable bridges, and township use them all the time, um, they do come permanent structures, they're based out of one Pennsylvania.
Will they, will they bridge 128 feet?
They'll, they'll bridge whatever spec you get.
Because this, what we're talking here is one, a similar bridge, but what we got is a bridge that's brought in in two pieces, each piece 60 long, and joint, and then put out over the?
Okay, yeah, that's what ADM does.
Yeah, but I think you're meaning a vehicular, right?
They'll do, they'll do any, but I don't know if you've looked into a, into a vehicular.
He did.
Did you look into ADM Lowing?
I did not look into ADM, I looked into a bridge that could carry, if you wished, and again, probably, quick background is, is we don't own that bridge. So, so what I, I did is I talked to the commissioners, and engineering is, is one of my portages, and so I said, "There is an alternate." At the time, of all the bridge meetings we had down at Drake Well, and everything else with PennDOT, and also, was it Taylor McCormick or McCormick-Taylor, which was their consultant, got to the point that PennDOT was thinking $3 to $5 million for that bridge. Well, they couldn't justify that, and then afterwards, they put the stake in its heart by calling it redundant.
I, that I was here for, I, I was here for all of that.
And, and I just, I just wanted to reiterate, is, is there's no way, once the state put the, the label redundant, that they're going to take and back up, because how many other bridges did they label redundant? And they're probably not going to do that.
So, once they turn that down, there's no bridge, so whose property doesn't it come in?
No, we have the opportunity there to take and put, and with deep under the city of Titusville, through the county, of putting a walk bridge. I also investigated a vehicular bridge. I went to, and Mr. Mannross was involved, I asked Mr. Mannross, I says, "Do you want me to try and get some information?", and he and the commissioner said, "Sure, what's it hurt to take and look for another alternative?" So I looked for a truss-sided bridge that had a concrete base, that also had, this is a single lane, and also had a six-foot concrete walkway, all enclosed. The bridge would be very similar to like, but a one-way bridge, is if you've ever gone to the Prescott Casino in Erie, if you've ever driven past there, the structure of the bridge, it's called a Cambridge Bridge. And I got information on that, we had the engineer come and look at the thing, the sales engineer, we talked about all kinds of things, the steel, I knew how much the steel was going to cost, I even went to talk to the installer and got him information. I figured out how many yards of concrete that we needed, and I put all these numbers and stuff, and I presented that, we, to the commissioners. And the commissioner said they just didn't have the money for that, it was over a million dollars, okay? That wasn't three or five million dollars, okay? But they didn't have the money for that. So, there was not much more I could do, but I can tell you that I personally feel that I've done everything I can for this community to try and keep that thing.
Can you just, for, can you look at the ADM line?
We, we, we could look at the others, and I'll tell you, again, is the bridge is owned by the county, and the county would have to give us permission to do that.
But then, once the bridge is gone?
But once the bridge is gone, we could see what the dollars are there. I will tell you that there was conversation about people buying it and making it, you know, historic and fixing it up, okay? That is not a vehicular bridge, there will be bollards on either side, that the only thing that you could do is walk across or get a bicycle across the thing, that's all it would be.
I know that, where I work, they've used this company before in putting a temporary bridge that allowed for log trucks, I mean, you're talking tonne.
This, the rating that I had on this was a 92 rating, and it was, it's good enough that you could run a Walmart 18-wheeler across that thing, okay? And although, could I reduce the cost? Possibly, because of reducing the weight limit, but here again, this is a full-blown heavy-duty bridge that you could run on there, because I'm adamant, people don't realize that there were paper streets, and that's what we call development areas up in that area.
Right.
And unfortunately, I fought and I fought and I fought with the folks, as the rest of us are, and it came down to, what was the PennDOT's thing, uh, we didn't meet their need.
Right.
The required need.
Our hearts are in you.
Well, I, I even went to the point, Ms. McCann, of, of saying that I've got ambulance services and everything else like that, and so people that tend to take and get people's hearts going to get on us and giving them false hope, I, I just.
Right, well, I understand that.
But I, I will tell you what, what was the name of that company again?
ADM Lowing.
Lowing, is that in Warren, PA or Warren, Ohio?
Not Warren, PA.
Over here, we're going to do that.
Okay, we can look into that, and again, we can propose that and see what.
Yeah, and, and I know, it's, once that this, the county has, I don't know, that PennDOT forever has decided, once it's won, then?
But I do want you to understand this, once the city of Titusville puts a bridge in there, we will become responsible for its maintenance, for bridge inspections.
Well, who was responsible for it when PennDOT had it?
The county.
County.
And that's why they bothered the?
No, no, I'll tell you, there's, there's, I also have the engineering reports, I went over to the county and got the engineering reports, and I don't want to take and drag this out too far for you, but I can tell you this, that there is one of the abutments that needs to have some work on it. You have 124 feet across that thing, and one of the abutments, you will have to take and probably lower some of the abutment on the top, recap them, the process would probably be similar to, like it was done on the bridge when you go into Oil City, they had to recap the abutments and stuff there. Now, they have a center, we have end-to-end abutments. So therefore, you have to have this true stress structure in order to take and do that. So without getting too awfully technical on this thing here, I can take a peek, just to look at these folks, I can talk with Mr. Mannross on this, to see whether there's anything that we, that's possible, we all share information and try to do the best we can here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gin, you're a couple of years ago, um, Jean, Spence?
Jean, yeah.
Jean. She gave me a newspaper, newspaper article, and it was about 50 years ago. There were issues with that bridge 50 years ago.
There, there have been issues with that bridge for a really long time, and, and the sad part is, is that PennDOT didn't take their responsibility, and I, I understand that we couldn't take their responsibility, but I don't think anybody fought enough to make them take the responsibility, which is crappy, I mean, I'm not blaming anybody.
No, because, because the blame lies with, you could go back 50 years ago to leadership of the, of that year, I mean, of that time, and.
We didn't have that, well, we also didn't have the ability to fix it properly like we do now, I mean, you know, we have different ways to structure things and people that, you know, but there's corporations that fix and do those things.
And I'm going to guess, it was approximately, approximately two years ago, when we were having the meetings down at Drake Well, and there was about, I would say about 45 people there, just correct me if I'm wrong, 45 people that were there, and I remember, I mean, from Jim Becker, and there was a, there was a lot of individuals there that was trying to fight for this bridge.
I know.
And we brought every scenario, need scenario to them.
I know, and PennDOT just says, "Absolutely not." And I mean, because I live there, I know that at any given point in time, if a firetruck has to go up the end of walls, they can't, they're not going to have, they're going to wait the term.
And that's, that's why I spec the bridge for emergency management.
Yeah, and I mean, and that.
I wanted a fire, I wanted a firetruck with water on it, be able to get across.
Yeah, and they, there's, it's, it's going to be impossible, because there's not enough parking spots for people who live up the street that have four cars, may park right on that corner, and because, you can't.
There's a lot of.
We didn't even get the cannibals over there.
I know, there was a lot of processes that went down on that, that was out of my control, but all I can tell you is I fought for that tooth and nail.
I know.
To the point of going to the, to the commissioner's front door, and them sitting across the table from me, and I presented it.
Dawn, no, there, there were so many people that fought for that.
Oh, I know.
You, you did.
I'm just saying.
I know, I know you did.
You did, Dawn, you went, he, he went and did, sat down with figures and tried to come up with a plan to, to find a bridge that was affordable.
Right, and you know that they, like, base, they have, they have bridges available that are, you know?
This, this bridge that I had, okay, installed in three sections, and after the concrete cured, okay, the bridge would have been done in a week's time, but the concrete got a lot, and, and one of the big problems is, is the obstacle. The obstacle is the high tension wires on the right-hand side, I should say the west side of the bridge. That causes some other things. The crane that's needed is a 500-ton crane, you might have to have two. So, this bridge came in three sections, and it would have slid across and put in there, and then you put the concrete into the base. So, as I presented to the commissioners at that time, you would have had a bridge within three weeks.
Gin, do you work for a township, or you're familiar with, okay, I'm sure you are aware that every time you, we get a bid, it's going to come in quite a bit more.
Oh, yeah.
And that one figure that we had for 171,000, I have my doubts that, that that's even going to cover it for a pedestrian bridge alone. We had the outfit that brought, that did the splash pad, they also do bridges, and we had them come in and take a look at that, and there, I think if I recall properly, the one concern is the abutments, there's going to be issues there because of.
Your deterioration.
It is, it is, it was all, it's just. It's historic.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you think about it, but this, you know...
So, we're certain...
Society can't get involved after it becomes...
Well, the other issue is the material. There is wrought material. And I don't mean R, W, okay? And wrought metal is harder to weld on. And when you do weld on that, if anybody has ever plated a chassis on a car, okay? You got a crack in your chassis on the car. Years ago, they used to take in, when you had chassis. Now, they're all unitized. Yeah. But you used to be able to fish plate and stuff like that. As soon as you welded on the end of the plate, okay, the metal deteriorated to the side of it. And that's... And this is what is going on. And I talked to the engineer who has done the service work on that. And he would also have been installed. So, he has much history with that bridge. So...
Thank you.
Yeah, we're working on it, but I'm glad you gave us that name that that's the name of the company.
Yeah. Because they make... They make something that works. I mean, even just getting anything for a little bit because I... It's horrible to watch it. I don't care about me so much.
I know.
You know, poor people that live up in the housing.
Well... In conclusion, I have watched what has happened to our community twice when PennDOT first closed off Franklin Street Bridge, okay? And then oops. The true story is, I think they ran out of money and then they had to come back and fix it because the decking wasn't right, okay? And so twice, the people on Bank Street had that road totally tore apart.
Oh, yeah.
So, luckily, we were able to kind of restore that this past year.
Yeah. Well, if you look at it, it's already approached a bridge. It's already painted up. There's spots on it, I mean, you know...
So, anyways, I've tried my best. I don't know much more I can do. I promise you, I will look into this. And what I can see, I can... Mr. Mannross and I can share information back and forth.
Thank you.
I had a question for Don with the talking of the Brown... The Perastree Bridge. You said that you weren't sure of the... Of any of the bridges. There was the Brown Street Bridge in Titusville, which was closed in nineteen eighty-four and restored in nineteen eighty-nine. That was a redundant bridge. PennDOT deemed it redundant. And the Maida Avenue Bridge was also closed. It was redundant and opened ten years later in twenty sixteen. Both of those were deemed redundant by the state. They're both county-owned bridges similar to the Perastree Bridge.
I can just tell you that it would be more difficult once they say that. One of the things that's behind the whole thing was EAD's group, if I remember, and I could be wrong on this, okay? That original grant for study of that bridge was like around three hundred and seventy-some thousand dollars. So, part of that was put through and the EAD's group was to take and do that. In fact, when we were on the fourth floor, they came before us, correct? And we had a bridge meeting up there before the place burned, several years ago. Two, four years ago. Anyways, so I took the gentleman to task about what's going on. And what it came down to, there was approximately seventy-five thousand, I'll just throw that out, left on that grant. And so they got Taylor McCormick-Taylor or Taylor McCormick, I forget which one it goes. But anyways, to finish the thing up. Why? PennDOT had to finish that up because that was a grant money. And they were going to have to pay it back if it wasn't closed. So, they... So, I don't know if politics played into the thing or not. But all I can say is, uh, the city of Titusville has worked with the county the best we can.
Sure. I agree. Well, you had said that the county owns the bridge. The city does not.
Correct.
If the city did own it, you said that the city would be required to maintain it. Do you know what the maintenance costs would be?
No.
If you had to maintain it?
No, I do not.
Okay. And does the county have a price that they want for the bridge? Have they offered it to the city? Or has the city requested it purchased the bridge?
I think it's in the state's hands right now. If you wanted the bridge, you could buy the thing from the state. Is that how it goes, Larry?
Yeah.
However, you are required to take and pay the demolition cost as well as probably the permitting. Because who knows what strange snail or fossil that may be sitting in that creek.
We will actually find that out because we're using CDVG money to put a pedestrian street or a pedestrian bridge in. We'll have to do our environmental review, which will include all of that.
Right.
Is that included in the engineering fate already or that's going to be additional?
That's... Well, I've named it here. Yeah. We have to investigate what's in there and correct it somewhere.
But your original question is, is that this was older money that was expiring. There's no way the bridge was going to get done with that bridge. So, here we ended up, God bless us, with a new fire truck, but I can't drive it back into the... And we need to protect it. So, because of the way CBG works, this met the requirement. Diana and Larry looked at that. So, it met the requirement. So, what we did is we voted on transferring that money over so we can get something done there. And then continue on seeing what we can do with the bridge. There... I don't know the true date. I know they postponed it another two years at least, right?
Last I heard, it was two more years.
Yeah.
Twenty... Twenty twenty years.
Maybe we'll end up like a Brown Street.
What's that?
Maybe we'll end up like Brown Street.